The air conditioning really works.
Sorry?
The air conditioner really works. It's called. Don't do it. I'm just saying it works. It's called.
Yeah? Good night. Turn one. Yeah.
Six o'clock.
We'll call the meeting to order. This is the Belavista City Council meeting for April 22, 2024. First item is to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Councilmember Snow.
Here.
Hughes. Here. Wasniak.
Here.
Wills.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
And Hansel.
Here.
Thank you. First item is citizen input, and we didn't have anyone sign up today. Second item is council member reply, so we didn't reply to that.
Oh, Mayor?
Yes?
Some people asked me about this meeting, and I had the Belavista moment, and I told them six thirty, so that'd be my bad, so they may or may not be coming. I'll ask when they come if they can have a few minutes then. I gave you the wrong time, so that's on me. Okay, good play.
Okay.
All right, I just asked. I'm coming with it.
Next item is action on the minutes, the minutes of the March 25, 2024 regular meeting. Any comments? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
That's Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes. Yes. Wasniak.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next item is reports. I have a proclamation I'd like to read. It's about Building Safety Month, which is May 2024. Whereas Belavista, Arkansas, is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence and resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest-quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas Mission Possible, the theme for Building Safety Month 2024, encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential services provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore I, Mayor John Flynn of Belavista, Arkansas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is another report, financial reports. And we have financial reports for the two months ending February 29, 2024. So far this year, results are good. Our city's sales tax is up 5.4% compared to last year. County sales tax is up 7.4%. Total revenues are up 10.5%. And we're having so far good fortune with our controlling expenses. Our year-to-date expenses are $443,000 less than budget. So we feel pretty good about our position so far this year. So it seems very similar to some of the reports we had last year, so we have good consistency, I would say maybe. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order procedure to allow all ordinances on the agenda to be read by title only.
So move. Second.
That was Mr. Wilton and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes. Yes. Wasniak.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
And Fowler.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Going to unfinished business, there's an ordinance requiring candidates for election to any municipal office of the city of Belavista in addition to any other requirement of state law to file campaign contribution expenditure reports with the Belavista city clerk and sufficient time for voters to make use of such information prior to the beginning of early voting and for other purposes. And this ordinance is on third reading this month.
Okay, obviously, I'm the sponsor of this ordinance. And I really struggled with whether to go ahead and move forward to make a motion to approve or not. And I decided I'm not going to do that this meeting. I'm going to defer for another month. I'll make a motion here just a minute to table to May. I would just like to say I believe the rationale supporting this ordinance is very strong. I believe the voters of Belavista have a right to know. Any campaign contributions that are made to candidates for public office in Belavista, I believe it can make a difference in people's decisions having known what some of that information may be. I actually believe it made a difference during our elections in 2022 once some of that conversation got out into the public. I did just kind of check and do the math a little bit. So the elections in 2024 will be held on November the 5th, which is the first Tuesday after the first Monday of November. Early voting would begin October the 21st. Currently, the campaign contribution reports would be due, I believe, the 27th of October, which is a full week after early voting begins. So even if the campaign contribution reports are submitted a week after early voting begins, it would still take people an amount of time to request, to receive, to review, you know, to digest, and maybe make some decision concerning that information. So I believe the rationale again is strong. And like I said, I've done a lot of other research in the meantime. Over the last couple of weeks, I actually know more about voting in Arkansas than I really ever cared to know. But I will talk about that in May, so I'm going to make a motion to table this ordinance until the May agenda.
Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wills. Is there more discussion?
I would support the proposed ordinance. I'm thinking that information for the public at large, private voting is important. And it may or may not have an influence on the outcome, but at least they will be informed as to where funding for campaigns occurs.
With me?
Two questions. Are you waiting to hope for an AP response?
I am. I'm sorry, I'm mistaken.
Oh, good. And have you got any update on that case then?
As of five minutes ago, when I looked again, there's been a little issue.
Thank you.
I would just decide, so I review the Voting Law of Arkansas quite extensively. And I didn't see anything in it that says that we can't enact something like this. You might have a different opinion, but there's not anything that states it. And so just a very, very last, I guess it's a paragraph, it's actually a sentence, in the ordinance, section three, it says, "Nothing in this ordinance shall be deemed to supersede or abrogate any requirement of state law regarding the timing or filing of campaign contribution expenditure reports by Belavista municipal office candidates within county court." So, you know, as I said, we're not trying to, you know, step on the state's toes, if you will. But this is what it has to do with our local elections and our municipalities specifically. And what is we may enact here?
Okay, so there's a motion, and a second to table this ordinance until May. Could we have our roll call vote?
Councilmembers Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes. Yes. Wasniak.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero, so it'll be tabled until May. Next one is a resolution. A similar topic is pressing the opinion of city council, a nonpartisan body, that citizens should be highly vigilant regarding the influence of partisan official interest group campaign contributions during Belavista nonpartisan municipal elections. And that was tabled in the past. But it's up to tonight.
They, you know, they don't necessarily, they kind of go hand-in-hand, but, you know, yet they don't. One is use of campaign reports, the other one is just being vigilant about where you accept your funding from. And be very careful that doesn't give people the opinion that you may be inswayed by a particular person or a particular party, a particular special interest group or private party. But I'm going to make a motion to table this resolution to the May agenda this month.
Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wills. Any discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and have a roll call vote on the motion to table until May the resolution.
Councilmembers Hughes. Yes. Wasniak.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
And Snow.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Okay, let's continue on with the new business. First one is an ordinance amended in section 10940, zoning ordinance amendments of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Belavista to modify notice requirements related to planning commission initiated zoning amendments and for other purposes. Staff didn't request this, but since it seems to be not that versatile, we may want to consider going to third and final ordinance. Third, any discussion?
I guess I'm still unclear as to what we're doing. I talked to Attorney Kelly today, and he provided a copy of the state ordinance. And it looks like we do, are required to do a public notification, whether it's initiated by the city or whether it's initiated by a particular private property. And so the notification is still going to happen. So I may have misunderstood the last meeting. Maybe Mr. Robertson could explain the process here.
Sure. Currently, our local ordinance goes above and beyond the state statute and says that city staff has to pay and publish a legal ad in the Weekly Dusset or the Democratic Ed, as it were, to main circulating newspapers here in Belavista. We choose to do a Weekly Dusset, although that earlier publishing requirement date, but that is more specific to Belavista. So we will typically publish a legal ad in the paper three weeks. We have to send it in three weeks before because the Weekly Dusset is required for legal ads to be sent in like a week before the date. It's Friday before the Sunday date, which is the Democratic Ed. It's really the content of the legal ad is what's changing. So right now, we're required to legally describe the property. And when we have rezones, and if it's not just a lot block and subdivision, that can be a massive legal ad and very expensive. So it could range from just a $50 legal ad, we've had all the way up to like a $1,200 legal ad. So we're just trying to do what other cities do, just notify the public in just length terms of the subject property, which is what the state requires, and just mixing. Since we don't get, we don't get application fees or anything to help, you know, lessen the blow of the legal ad and things like that with our city-initiated planning commission-initiated public hearing. So we're going to reduce the cost on that as well as sign costs and things like that.
So what kind of advertisement would we show for a property and a planted subdivision? And then for a lot that had a mixed description or a certified survey map creating it or something like that?
So if it's a subdivision, typically it's just lot block and subdivision. And then we always put the address. We try to describe it in length terms. If there isn't an address, like across from, across from an address that does exist or exactly on a Roderick Road, 279, whatever it is, we try to describe it to where anyone can understand it because not everyone knows how to read a legal description. That's really just something that we, our municipal ordinance right now. I'm not sure if anyone uses it. So we're paying for a lot of words that it's not probably being used right now.
So, bring it up.
Go ahead, Mr. Fowler.
No, 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 so if anyone saw, you know, the notice in the newspaper, and they had any further questions, they could always contact. So you answer yourself and get a more detailed description.
And the legal ad will say who to contact, and our email and our phone number. And then we also direct it to our website too, because we also go above and beyond posted there.
Do all lots in Belavista have an address? Applied lots would have an address?
Actually, applied lots, that they were applied before we were said they do not have an address. They don't get an address until they apply for a building permit and then they're getting that one. We'll sign one. New subdivisions that are being approved now, we do require under some plans, but, you know, those are only two subdivisions in the city. All the rest don't have addresses.
How about meets and bounds, certified survey lots? Do those get addresses when they get created too?
They don't get an address until there's a building.
Where the building goes on.
That's the building, yeah.
Building location on the lot to change the number on the house or building or whatever.
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
I was hoping they'd get a motion to go to third and final.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Second.
Second. That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wasniak. So the motion is to suspend the rules and go to third and final. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes. Yes. And Wasniak.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. I'll read it for a third time. Amending section 109 dash four of zoning ordinance amendments of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Belavista to modify notice requirements related to planning commission initiated zoning amendments and for other purposes. Is there a motion to approve?
I can just say so three things here. We need state regulations. We save the city money. If anybody needs any further information, it's published in the article so they can call and ask questions or any information if they need it. All right, okay, so we're good. So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wasniak. Roll call vote on the motion to approve.
Councilmembers Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes. Yes. And Wasniak.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next one is an ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with superior automotive group that amount not to exceed $120,000 for the purchase of two 2024 Chevrolet Tahoe police vehicles for use by the police department. This is another one that people aren't happy with. We could go to third and final.
So I believe the wording that it replaces what we moved in eight, this is April 1, right? Because there was a mistake or an error.
That's, that's another one.
That's a different one.
I see that in another document. Okay.
Larry?
There's a pretty red suburban parking lot. Is that one of the new ones?
I don't believe so.
The bright red one?
Not that I know of, no. I wouldn't get a red one. Maybe.
Some stage.
And he doesn't get them until you approve.
Hey, my first white car here was a 66 Chevrolet station wagon. White red, turquoise, white on the seat cover. That's the first white car I was assigned. We had to sport bait, Keystone Castle, it was pretty good back then.
I'd like to make this motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote on the motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final.
Councilmember Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes. Yes. Wasniak.
Yes.
And Wills.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. I'll read it for a third time. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with superior automotive group that amount not to exceed $120,000 for the purchase of two 2024 Chevrolet Tahoe police vehicles for use by the police department.
Move to approve. Second.
That was Mr. Wilton and Mr. Fowler. So roll call vote on the motion to approve.
Councilmembers Snow.
Yes.
Hughes. Yes. Wasniak.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
And Hansel.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next one is an ordinance amended section 26-36, prohibited parking of vehicles on certain areas of property in residential zones of the city of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Belavista to provide for a permit to parking on grass declaring that emergency and for other purposes. And this was brought by Mr. Fowler, so I'd like him to comment on it a little. But this is an attempt to solve the problem at Tanger Creek Parking Area because it's become so popular. And, but it would apply to other places as well. We particularly thought about the, you know, various craft fair things, Fourth of July, different times when they do have parking on grass.
Yeah, so Mr. Wasniak brought this to our attention in the work session last Monday. He received a call or two, I don't know how many, from residents that live by the Tanger Creek Trailhead. And what's happened is that area has become so popular with residents and probably visitors to Belavista as well. It's a nature walking trail, you know, it's great for families or people that maybe aren't as mobile as others. But what's happened is that parking lot is getting full on weekends. So as a result, people are having to park on the streets. And I don't know what that new best street is that goes off of that trailhead, but they're parking on both sides. It's causing congestions and issues. Residents are becoming irritated, you know, by the inconvenience of it. And the situation is right by the pay, I guess it's paid, I don't know if it's paid or if it says be to rattle. But there's a grass area that I believe the POA has actually allowed parking on that area in the past, but per our ordinance, that isn't allowed. And, you know, there was, began a lot of conversation about, you know, how to solve this, but nothing was really settled. So, you know, I kind of walked away from it, and I called the mayor, and I said, couldn't we create a temporary permit to handle? we create a temporary permit to handle special situations? And I reminded them that we had the Northwest Arkansas Festival previously, the Arkansas House Fair where we had parking on the grass. We have the Fourth of July Parade that has extensive parking on the grass. And we haven't had anybody raise an issue with that in the past. And I believe that the Tannion Creek Trailhead is a special situation also. That is private property right next to it. And it's been used in the past and I don't know why we would want to keep the current situation in play, continue to irritate the residents. And actually, I guess there are a couple of people, different people that went over to park, they couldn't, and there was a disagreement over who could park where. And it evolved into a shouting match of sorts and it was kind of a bucking scene. But why continue to have this situation when we can solve it? And that's, that's part of the responsibility of the city council, you know, is to work for and represent, you know, the residents and try to find solutions for situations like this. Thus, this ordinance, which would allow for a temporary permit for three consecutive days that they have to go, I guess, to CDS to request the permit. There's going to be an ordinance, actually a resolution that follows this one that's going to recommend a permit fee. We'll have a conversation about that in a minute. But now Northwest Arkansas, what, the FESL, the Fourth of July event, Tannion Creek, they can all go get temporary permits that would serve and solve the situation of parking on the grass in these special situations. So that's what it's about.
I have a question. So the POA, they would need to get a three day permit for every weekend basically for the beer garden when it's open, because they also park in the grass at the beer garden, both springs, as well as the Tannion Creek area or any of the possible area?
Keep, keep in mind that the grass parking issue is in residential zones.
Oh, perfect.
So the Tannion area is residential zone, thus the problem. I can't speak to those other areas. I don't think they're residential.
Perfect. But could they do with one giant application for the whole year? Or would you need every weekend to come in?
The permit shall not exceed more than three consecutive days at a time. There's no language in the draft that says that you have to, you can only apply so far in advance.
So is it twice a permit?
I think, I don't think we could deny an applicant who came in and said, here are six different three day periods that are separated by day that we desire to have a permit. I think they could do that as long as they're not, as long as the permits are issued for no more than three days in a row.
We were anticipating that, we actually have a draft for, that we were anticipating they could sign up for a bunch of weekends basically at once. Sure.
Yeah, so I actually, you know, had a conversation with Tom today about this and he's, he's fine with it. You know, solves our problem. Additionally, just so the public will know, there's actually, I shouldn't say, an act in progress, but there are plans to put a parking lot in that grassy area, but they have to go through, you know, the planning and they have to go through the development stage and then has to go before the planning commission. So there are steps and that's going to take what, a minimum of right eight to nine months to get that done. I don't know how long, but it's going to take a period of time. So this is really kind of like something that, you know, a situation should be temporary until they get their parking lot done. Wendy?
Another question. The funds that are allocated for the permitting fees, would those be delegated, would those be used as this?
They're not assigned, so they would just go into the terminal where they're in the lot.
So you're saying that Tom is okay with the $10?
Yes, he is. We had a conversation about that a little bit. This is, you know, a conversation with the city council and what we would decide, right? But I was going to kind of wait till I got to that because I was making, I'm making a difference myself.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, it's a second issue to come up to. Larry?
Reading ahead on our agenda, if you need to add, it would be $10 a day as proposed in the draft that we have attached here. So it'd be 30 days for a three day weekend. So if we have 10 weekends, two and a half months, it's only $300. It's not, not a huge amount. And it covers, covers the issue and the problem that we have to some degree. Especially in the big picture.
I wanted to add too, this, this ordinance does include an emergency clause, so it would go into effect immediately. We don't have to vote on that separately, right, Jason, it's an ordinance.
You'll have to vote on the emergency clause separately.
You know.
So you'll have to, you'll have to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading and then if that's adopted, have fun debate. And then if you adopt the ordinance, someone will need to move in second, emergency clause, and then we'll vote on that.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final. Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel.
Good question.
Yes, there.
So if a resident is going to have a large gathering, birthday party, whatever situation might be, then they can also apply for a permit to park on the grass?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I should mention, one of the reasons we put this in the residential section is because it was a way to go forward with the planning commission. So it would have taken a month or two more to see if the planning commission had to do it first.
Is there a worry that on the residential part of it, the private resident may be abusing this to, hey, have a $1,500 parking pass for every weekend at their house or, or short term rentals or?
As long, they can get a permit for three days at a time. As long as there's a day in between, they can seek as many permits as they want. Now, keep in mind that, that part of the requirement is that the proposed temporary parking shall not create a public safety or traffic concern as determined by the chief of police. And if they're pulled off in the yard, it's kind of hard to say that they're in the street creating a traffic concern or a, I guess it could potentially be public safety if you just had so many cars in there, people couldn't get out or something. But to answer your question, yes.
Mr. Wills?
Does this put us at risk with the short term rentals in terms of allowing parties to occur at those or large gatherings?
It's addressed parties, it doesn't address short term rentals, it addresses parking on the grass and residential zones.
So it allows that to happen?
If, if a short term rental was in a residential zone, which most, I probably dare say all of them are, they could get a permit to park cars in the grass for more than three days.
For, for three days? Then they have to skip a day? Correct. Which can't be?
They have to skip a day. They can only get a permit for three consecutive days. And they have to get another permit for a different three consecutive days.
Terrence Snow?
Has this been before the planning commission hasn't reviewed this, have they?
No, it's not a zoning regulation, it's a parking regulation. It's in our parking code, so it's not in our zoning code. But we define the parking issue as it relates to a residential zone, but it's not a zoning regulation.
I don't, I just, I think that maybe this hasn't been thought out thoroughly. I mean, I can't place my finger just at the moment on what the situation might be, but I feel like this is probably going to open a, not a can of worms, but a bucket of them.
Well, Mayor, the, the debate point at this time is whether to, the motion say to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading. That's where the debate is at this point.
Question?
Uh, Larry?
Who, who may apply for this? If I read the ordinance, any person or equity owning or controlling.
That's correct.
So it could be a manager for the site or it could be the owner?
Any person or entity owning or controlling residential zone real property.
So it could be a caretaker as an example?
If they have, if they have control.
Yeah. So we have a motion, a second, a go to third and final. Are we ready to vote on that? Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
No.
Hughes? No. Wozniak?
Yes, reluctantly, but this is, sir, if we have to fix it, we always can.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Pass forty-two?
Uh, motion carried forty-two. So we still?
Mayor, we need to, we're going to read the ordinance a third time.
Yeah, we've got a third final, so more discussion or?
We gotta read.
Mayor, you need to read the ordinance a third time.
Amending section 26 dash 36 prohibited parking of vehicles on certain areas of property in residential zones of the city of the code of ordinances of the city of Belavista to provide for a permit for parking on grass declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
And so I just have a, I think this is a good idea. I'm cautious to go so fast into it. Have the other department heads like had a chance to like opine on this? Like any thoughts or is it going to be proper or?
Um, we got, it was drafted mainly by Dilla Robinson.
Okay.
So their department was involved in it.
And they were okay with this backing us?
Well, I don't know.
They all mentioned in the main, so whatever the mayor's position is, it's a safe position.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll bring, bring.
Okay.
I just have eight of them. The only thing that gives me pause is just residential parking. Cause I can see, I can see how that could be abused.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, the intent is there, I think it's the right thing for the right reason. I mean, I don't know, let's just do like, I mean, can we do a special, I don't, I don't know. I'd really be curious to see what everybody else thinks because I really think that we could be sticking our foot right in with residential parking. Because I, for one, really like that aspect of Belavista. I lived next door to my neighbor's boat for about five years and I know that's not what this is, but I have mow around that wheel every weekend in summer and I hate it. And I just hate to look at it. And I think this is going to open us up into a real big discussion that we're going to have a, a time. Anyway, I'd be here to see what.
I think it does dovetail a little bit with the.
Well, it's, if you ever made a point of $1,500 for a parking.
It's been, for, for every weekend, like it's like $1,500, like $60.
Yeah, I mean, if you're, if you're able to get five couples at your house on a weekend, I mean, I, and I'm not going to, I don't want to hash all that stuff out. So I'd say that there is a potential for abuse or overuse possibly. So that's my thoughts.
Wendy?
And motor vehicles also include like RVs, is that correct?
An RV is a motor vehicle.
Okay, so RVs could be also parked at these, physically for short term rentals as well in the front yard for three days at least or a weekend, based on this.
I mean.
Wait, Taylor?
RVs still, we don't worry about the screen. And I also wanted to note as well, most of them, the POA also have to abide by ACC requirement. And they also oversee parking on grass and service materials.
Is the ACC okay with this?
They are, they have told me they, they are aware of the situation at Tannion and need for something like this.
Okay.
May I, the Fourth of July fireworks, we rezoned the parcel of land right there by the bathrooms at Scottsdale and Glasgow, I don't know, a couple of years ago. So that is R1. So I don't know who's going to step forward and tell, you know, that, that can't, we can't park in that area because that's something that's R1. Now, I'm not sure about all the property out 279, you know, going toward Wausau and what that is zone exactly.
For the festival?
Yeah.
That's R3, but they have a conditional use permit. That was issued this, this month. So theirs is already taken care of.
So conditional use?
Yeah, theirs was covered under their conditional use permit. Anytime you have an event that's longer than three days or you have a tent that's larger than 800 square feet, you have to get a conditional use permit with all kinds of conditions from the planning commission. So they are already covered under their CUP that was issued this month.
Okay, we still have the situation at the fireworks. That is R1. Yeah, I'm just saying, yeah. What, I, you John?
So, so the question is, we, we are unable to issue a permit for that to the POA or?
Well, I'm just saying, the fireworks is, is zone is R1. You know, now, now, a lot of residents. Scottsdale, yes, just like this parcel of land we're talking about right here.
The owner, however, is the POA.
Right, just like there, the owner of this land and the, the grass park, the area for the grass parking on as well.
If a joint effort to make that happen, but probably not even worth that.
I can now, again, you gotta put your big boy pants on, turn your back. I mean, it's just kind of what, it's not about big boy. It's about a broad stroke of parking across the entire city, like just laying out of nowhere. You're talking about special events here and then you're talking about people that are going to be calling in every weekend that there's five cars parked down. Then we add some special events to the ordinance. I'm just saying that we're using a broad stroke here.
Taylor, could you pull up the microphone for, I want to make sure the television cameras got it.
I'm going to, I'm about to really confuse this.
Yeah.
But if the area where the festivals are conducted is residentially zoned, the conditional use permit cannot be used to allow parking otherwise prohibited. That's not a zoning regulation, it's a parking regulation. So, I mean, I understand they bring trailers and whatnot out there to put their, put a ride or, and they park cars out there all the time, but I don't.
Well, I assume the point you were making Doug, when you said it was R1, the point is, is that they need to be able to park cars there for the Fourth of July fireworks?
Yeah, absolutely.
This is consistent with doing.
Yes. Yeah, it's really interesting. You know, you come up with what you think is a simple solution and then it just gets so mopped off so fast. And I don't know, I mean, it sure, the residential properties, like where I live at my house, I guess I could go get a permit to park in my front yard. I don't know that that's going to be well received within neighborhoods and things like that. I think that you're probably going to make some enemies pretty quickly. And I just, you know, to me, I guess it could happen and if it did go down that road, we could rescind it if we had to if it was abused. Right, Jason?
Either you or Doug, you can repeat it.
There you go.
So what I wanted to ask you, Taylor, and this is outside our purview in some ways, what is your perception of what the ACC rules are?
They have a very similar requirement for single family lots that we, right now, we probably came up with ours based off of theirs, but they require single family homes to park on S V two event or conference.
I would, I would be willing to bet a dollar that the areas that we're discussing are not designated privately as residential on the plants. So the issue of parking on the grass, the private issue of parking on the grass that the ACC would be concerned about would not apply to Tannion Creek area, would not apply to the fairgrounds area, I don't call it fairgrounds area, Cooper Land, that's actually not even in the POA. So what, what this ends up doing is creating a situation where someone in the residential neighborhood could say, I'm going to get a city permit to park a car for three days in the yard and the ACC is going to come knock on the door and say, we don't allow you to do that.
Well, that, that was a point of my question to Taylor, maybe this is a hypothetical where the ACC bails us out. I mean, we're making a rule that helps amount of Tannion. where the ACC bails us out, I mean, we're making a rule that helps them out at Tanier, and if people try to use it, if they're out of the ACC, it's gonna shoot them down.
Is this not so much the chicken situation, like, we're saying, yeah, you can do this, but?
It is very analogous to that, where we allow people to have a certain number of chickens in residences, but the covenants did not allow it, and so some people face civil litigation regarding that, even though they weren't compliant with the RV regulations.
The White Sox was another case that...
Kind of surprised it doesn't really matter right now, day of this conversation, kind of surprising, the POA did request a rezon on this, and they did a rezon on all the other properties. But it doesn't matter today, but it's kind of surprising.
Yes.
I guess, but there is some risk, uh, I sense we could be at risk here, but we created the ordinance, and if we approve it, we can rescind it, we can amend it, revise it for the same, uh, vehemence that we're going after tonight, at least. My sense is that we're gonna wanna get it activated and effective tomorrow. So while we may be at risk, you know, the ACC may not agree with it, or we may be at risk in terms of opening Pandora's box for some situation that we haven't thought about, uh, but we'll learn that very soon, so.
Uh, Jason, if we had a motion to approve, in a second, yeah?
Yes. You're, you're debating on third reading this today.
Okay, I thought you did.
Yeah, we passed the third reading.
Okay, so you just, you just motion to approve?
Yeah.
Second.
And then Mr. Hansel and Mr. Fowler, motion to approve. So I have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
No.
Hughes? No. Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
And Fowler?
Yes.
Uh, motion carried forty-two.
What's the last part?
Uh, having an emergency clause.
Move to enact an emergency clause from this ordinance. Second.
That was Mr. Wilmes and Mr. Hansel.
Roll call vote by council members.
Uh, hang on, uh, Mr. Snow?
I just will see the need for the emergency call, but I'm seeing what the need is for this to immediately take effect.
Oh, well, the reason is, you know, for emergency clause, it has to be health, safety, and welfare, and we've had a situation that's a substantial safety risk because of the parking situation. People park out both sides of the street, emergency vehicles can't get through, but that, so.
Kansas, Indian Canyon Creek area.
Yeah, and then just Indian Canyon Creek area, yeah, that's the reason why they want to, and this is the time of year, it happens, if this was January, we would need an emergency clause, because it's the time of year where it's become overwhelmed with...
Yeah, without the emergency clause, it is sixty days.
Well, if we've got, we have a parking situation where the parking is being blocked, where emergency vehicles can't get through, then that should be a police department issue. I mean, that should be able to be rectified by the police department.
It is able to be rectified, but, yeah, that's true, you can do it one way.
We have a motion in a second, right?
Of course.
For the emergency clause, uh, roll call vote.
Councilmembers Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
No.
Hughes? Yes. Wasniak?
Yes.
Uh, motion carried five to one, thank you for that. Uh, next one is a resolution establishing a permit fee for permits to park motor vehicles on grass pursuant to section twenty-six thirty-six of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Bellevista. Doug, did you hear?
You know, after some of the conversation that we just had, um, I'm, I'm gonna leave it like it is, I'm, I'm good with it like it is.
Move to a group. Second.
Mr. Wilmes and Mr. Fowler, this is a, oh, about the resolution for the permit fee of ten dollars a day.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A simple question, if they want to get a permit, does it have to be for three days? No, they can get it for two days?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's three.
It's not to exceed three days, so.
Yeah.
Can you move for one minute?
Yeah.
Ten dollars, yeah.
Thank you.
Good question.
Question?
Jerry?
So I must have a, uh, like, a pop-up used car sale, I got them parked three or four cars in the yard with sale signs on them.
Well, there's more involved there than just parking cars. I would say that's a retail car sales lot, and that would probably violate some of the code that it had.
Just to get all your register.
Assuming they weren't registered, that would be a problem.
I think if, if they buy a permit for three days and, and they said, and park cars there with sale signs on them, they got a permit to park their car.
And that's all they'd be allowed to do, and everything else would still be in full effect?
So is that going to be, that's not going to be a criminal matter, right?
No, it'd be an ordinance, they're, they're running a car lot in the front yard on the grass, and just saying, I'm giving you a three-day permit, three-day sale only, they're not gonna be violating anything by parking the cars on the grass, they would have a permit for that, but there's gonna be a violation of zoning ordinance for connecting, for having a car lot in a residential zone, and buying and selling cars, it could be commercial activity. That would be, I mean, that would be my recommendation on that, if somebody decided to do that.
Mr. Wilmes?
Mr. Kelly, would it not be also a violation of the fact that vehicles need to be licensed? If you park it directly?
Uh, they do have to be, all other regulations apply, so they could have a permit to park the car, but they cannot park them licensed cars, so that can still potentially be a problem. In this theoretical car lot in the front yard of a house, I don't know whether or not there are valid license plates on these cars or not, so, gotta be fact specific.
Any more?
No.
Okay.
Call for a question.
Yeah, uh, do we have a motion, second, and a resolution? Okay, our roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
No.
Hughes? Yes. Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
And Fowler?
Yes.
Motion carried five to one. The next one is a resolution approving body-worn camera and in-car camera policies for the police department. We had some discussion with the chief going over that, there's more questions for the chief about it.
I have anything? Questions? Motion to approve.
That was Mr. Hansel and Mr. Wilmes, our roll call vote.
Councilmembers Snow?
Yes.
Hughes? Yes. Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution approving an organizational structured chain of command policy for the police department. Any questions other than that? Very thorough, that was very straightforward.
Yes. Motion to approve, second.
Then Mr. Hansel and Mr. Fowler, uh, roll call vote on the motion to approve.
Councilmembers Snow?
Yes.
Hughes? Yes. Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution approving the mayor's requirements of Laura Hoffer to position six and Mark Felton to position seven on the tree advisory board for three-year terms ending May one, twenty twenty-seven. Their motion approved.
So. Second.
Mr. Wilmes and Mr. Hansel, our roll call vote.
Councilmembers Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
And Hughes? Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Henry Stafford and Sons Inc. an amount of a hundred eleven dollars and ninety-two cents per ton for asphalt street resurfacing, hot mix overlay, and further authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Vance Brothers Inc. an amount of two dollars seventy-five cents per square yard for slurry street resurfacing. Uh, Mr. Wilmes?
I have a question, uh, for Karen. Uh, with the asphalt paving at a hundred eleven ninety-two, are there any additional costs that are not included in that, that we would see added down to the contract?
Yes, there are, that comes out of that budget. There are additional costs that will come out of the budget. I got kind of a break in here. Um, we do valve risers to match the water valves with the new asphalt, because we'll increase the thickness of that. We also have a manhole, some butt joints, some contractor striping, set in half streets, so I think there will be sticks for the crosswalks, trail crossings, and then any other costs with, with associated with that. But for the one eleven... Uh, we can't, uh... The one eleven ninety-two, that's for the actual hot mix itself rolled in place.
That's the prep to serve.
Yes. Now, for our total budget, it includes some other items.
Oh, relative to the add-on costs, are any of those that we pass on to other folks?
No.
So we assume that even though they're in our right of way?
Correct.
It's been my, my best practice and experience that things that don't belong to the city are passed on to the agency that owns them. So as an example, if it's a water valve, it goes to the water department.
We pay for the riser because we're the ones changing the height, we're the thickness of the asphalt.
They're in our place, they're in our property, so. It's inconveniencing us and causing an extra charge to us, allowing us to do that.
This year, the valve risers were fifty-seven twenty-nine each, the ones for them to adjust them.
So the bid total on valve box risers is how much?
So on the contract?
Yeah.
For them to adjust them, it's fifty-seven twenty-nine each, for us...
What's the total? How many?
We are expecting there to be thirty.
Ah.
Thirty.
Thirty, so sixty times thirty, eighteen, what, eighteen?
The bid amount was one thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars and seventy cents on that line item.
And what about the manholes?
The manholes, we will purchase that, and we're estimating at five hundred.
Total?
Yes, five hundred dollars total. We don't have a whole lot of manholes in Bellevista, so we drive each street prior to the contractor account what we need to do, and we're estimating, we're gonna have to replace five hundred dollars worth of manhole covers. That's gonna be adding the riser to increase the height of that bid.
So when you say the capital for the asphalt is two million three hundred forty-five thousand, is that just for the hot mix, or does that include the extra things you just talked about?
So our budget includes all of it.
Yeah.
On the contract itself, the line items are going to be the hot mix overlay, the water valve adjustments, the mild butt joints, and the street striping.
Yeah.
That's what we included in the contract.
The total bid that we're awarding is based upon our bottom line bid for all of the extra items that we know about.
Correct.
Or have estimated.
Yes, we spend a lot of time estimating, we spend a lot of time driving the streets to have a very accurate number here.
So in reality, if they find two or three or four more water valves, or manholes, or other things like that, the cost could be higher.
Right, it would be each on the water valves, linear feed on the butt joints, street striping by linear feed.
So when we approve this, we're actually approving a variable total, not necessarily a fixed to penny total.
Yes, it's a unit price.
Unit, unit price bid, and this is based on our best knowledge as of today.
Correct.
Yeah, but for the whole budget, we, we don't go over budget, we can't go over budget.
Right, there's, there's a cap of the budget on it.
But if this is less than what the budget...
So we had estimated a higher dollar amount per ton on our estimate worksheet, based off kind of the standard market, what was going, this estimate, this bid came in a little bit lower, so we'll be able to do some additional streets this year, but remaining under that budget amount that the city council approved.
Assuming, assuming we don't have any other extras in the other categories that pushes us?
Um, it's kind of limited, we're not gonna add a whole new water valve somewhere, this is just the riser, so the extras will be eliminated. The unknowns, I should say.
Just for the sake of the general public, um, I think it's interesting for them to see the total numbers, the hot, the asphalt overlay is two million three hundred, three hundred forty-five thousand, and the slurry is nine hundred thousand, so it's a pretty big budget all in all.
Yes.
For us.
Well, we have more miles per capita of streets than any city in Arkansas, so...
That is true.
Close to show you.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I know there we have some issues streets, I mean, what city doesn't, right? But if you, yeah, like, travel around, you go to a lot of other cities, our streets are pretty darn good.
Yes, they are.
By March, they really are, so.
I think they improved quite a lot, the time I've been at the city council, they've made some real strides, and a big effort.
But that was one of the, the issues that was revealed, I think, when Peter had a survey put out to city residents of what was important to them, the street, the streets was right at the top, so he made that, you know, one of his priorities, and I think we're, we're gonna continue on with that, that process.
Right, with the city council supporting the budget to be able to fund more streets, it's definitely an overall improvement.
Now, withstanding the streets that are unapproved that we own too, so, it's a whole separate nemesis.
That is a whole separate issue.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, second.
That was, thank you, Karen.
Okay.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wilmes, uh, roll call vote.
Councilmembers Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
And Hughes? Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution amending the twenty twenty-four city budget regarding development impact fee authorized expenses for the library and police department. And you have an attachment about this, it was, uh, for the library, it was sixteen thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars, and for the police, it was, what, three hundred fifteen, three hundred five thousand?
Fifty. Oh, that's what, no.
Yes.
It's two eighty-nine, two ninety-three, twenty-three.
Right.
That's the request?
Yeah, that's right.
So this is, we, we have approved, basically, this, you know, prior meeting, that this actually gets to the exact number, right?
Yes.
Is what this does.
Yes, this is approved.
Yeah.
The broad meaning of the year, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, second.
That was Mr. Fowler, Mr. Hansel, uh, roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes? Yes. Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
And Fowler?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution, amending resolution number R twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Superior Automotive Group of Silent Springs pursuant to a state procureable contract for the purchase of four twenty twenty-four Dodge Drangle all-wheel-drive pursuit vehicles in a amount of nineteen hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars for the police department.
Second.
That was Mr. Wilmes and Mr. Wasniak.
This is a one-word mistake.
This is the, this is quite a word, I'm like...
Your words adjusted a little, yeah.
Chief was gonna say something, but I didn't want to talk.
No, it's okay. You guys, okay?
Uh, I think we had a motion in a second, so our roll call vote.
Councilmembers Snow?
Yes.
Hughes? Yes. Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.[1796.24] The next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a guaranteed maximum price contract amendment of construction management team. In the total amount of six million three hundred seventy-four thousand and seven hundred seventy-three dollars and eighteen cents for further construction and remodeling of the former police station and fire station number one for purposes of constructing city administrative offices, phase one and two combined with associated site work in brands. And, uh, I'm sure the chief can elaborate. I wanted to mention that two point six million, two million six hundred fifty-nine thousand of this was approved already. That was the work that was done, uh, changing the police station and the fire, uh, living quarters. And really, the new things up today are three million dollars for, uh, phase two, which is the administrative offices and the fire department's offices. And six hundred eighty-five thousand for site work. Uh, chief, you wanna go ahead and elaborate?
That's correct. Councilman Fowler, officials called me to get kind of certification this afternoon on that. Um, this amendment here to say that AIA, document A-133, is amended to phase one A, which is already approved by the council in, um, September twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three in a amount of three hundred sixty-seven thousand and some change, which is the demo part of the two, oh, four, two-story police station. Okay, where they demoed it out, which we come back in, uh, the next month and got the, um, phase one B renovation, two-story building construction complete, fire sprinkler system designed for expansion in the future phases two, three, and four. That was also passed by resolution in October two thousand twenty-three with the combination of both of those prices of two million six hundred fifty-nine thousand, one hundred thirteen dollars and some change. This amendment includes all of that plus things to new two-story building demand of approximately six thousand, six hundred five square feet, including site work and paving around phase one and phase two buildings. What that means is, it's asking for the funding to start the new two-story project that's coming out from existing two-story project that's fire, I mean, which goes north. That includes a fire administration on the top floor and city hall administration on the bottom level. With other site work and things like that, it's got to go around that particular project. When I spoke to the council on Monday, I didn't realize that Mark was gonna include the site work on that, which makes sense, we need to get the site work done so we can have people park them all again in other phases of the project. So what, this is what this guarantee amount of price amendment is for to see. It's a, all of, all of those amended amendments to the grant over six million, uh, was it six million three?
So one thing I was gonna do, and I'm just doing math on my own. So we have right now five million seven hundred seventy-seven thousand in the capital budget for 2024, which means we've already spent some of the money of the six point two billion or whatever, in, in 2023, right?
Yes, we, um, so total amount in 2023, we spent around a little over two hundred thousand for, for stuff in there. And then, of course, with the demo and some other things, um, earlier this year we paid for, was, is another, another four hundred fourteen thousand somewhere around there, so about six hundred, below six hundred thousand dollars we paid so far towards this project.
Right.
At the time.
Question for you. I happened to be at city hall, uh, last week and observed the DOT, Article Department of Transportation, in a reception room looking at the main entrance into the current site, trying to determine what they were going to do to restore that project, which ends apparently to shore the bridge, the structure over, uh, Highway seventy-one. Has anyone from the consultant or you been coordinating with them so that when they're done with all of their work, we're not gonna go out there and tear it all up and redo it all to make it fit our plan?
We are currently working with the Department of Transportation and with Emory, Satten, and Sons on the plan of, my understanding of the original plan, that Crafton Toll has designed for the city, the site. Mark, is that not, is that correct?
It appeared from what I observed, uh, and listened to, that they were unsure about what they were actually going to do there. Like they were shooting from the hip on their side with their plan, not knowing what was final. My only comment to them was, I hope that you and the city are coordinating so that you don't put in a new system of entry, and we come and tear it all out, and redo it once it's done to city hall and fire station, so.
You are correct. There was some confusion. I was out there as well, along with that confusion. But I believe that we got the square of the way that they're gonna use the current site plan construction that Crafton and Toll, the cities, civil that they hired, to do the work. The plan that's in place is what they're gonna be doing as far as that.
So to the extent that they're going to do restoration work for, for the bridge project itself, and the approaches I need are in, it will now will be in accordance with our plan for the final site.
To my knowledge, they're gonna do that plan in front of city hall as stated on the Crafton and Toll site plan that the city has approved.
So that's.
The city planning commission approved.
So that happened this week?
That's right. Is, am I speaking right, Mark?
Motion to approve, second.
That was Mr. Hansel and Mr. Wasniak. A roll call vote.
Councilmembers Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Uh, motion carried six to zero. Uh, for announcements, next city council work session is Friday, thirty P.M. on Monday, May twenty. Next city council regular meeting is six P.M. on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth. That's a Tuesday because of the memorial holiday. A planning commission work session, four thirty P.M. on Thursday, May two. Planning commission regular meeting, four thirty P.M. on Monday, May thirteen. Board of Construction Appeals, three P.M. Tuesday, May fourteen, if necessary, at Fire Station Number Four conference room. Unless there's anything else.
If you haven't been to Lake Bellevista lately, they've taken wolf to the fencing down, which you can actually drive into where that lake was and see everything they've done. They poured an awful lot of cement, an awful lot of acid, and you need to go look. But can you go from the parking lot along seventy-one over to the veterans? I didn't say they fixed the bridge.
Well, that doesn't mean you can't walk over there.
No.
If you like to, you can, and you can drive right up to the, you can actually drive in it now, if you go from Memorial to South.
Yeah, yeah, the parking lot area is.
But they've taken most of their fencing down for construction, so now she drive in there and see what they've done.
Yeah.
We just have to wait for the first big flood to see if it makes a difference or not.
Okay, uh, Karen Wilson?
I, I want to comment. I've heard, had some complaints from residents about unqualified, uh, specialists doing work, uh, home improvement projects around the city, Dex being one of them, so I don't know if that's an issue.
Are they complaining to the right people, or who are they?
That's, that's the question.
They need to talk to, to CDS, road enforcement, building officials, uh, well, building officials, but it's, it's, talk to the right people, and it will be taken very seriously. But so many people just talk, and then don't talk to the right people.
I, I hear you.
And then that, you know, what, what are we supposed to do?
Well, thanks for bringing that up. Okay, uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
So.